You're the one that was wearing a suit to the park.
Mr. Mabel.
I know.
Of your 25 parks, 20 of those have playgrounds. One of our priorities every single day is to conduct a playground safety inspection. So that's one of our top priorities that gets accomplished by our Parks Team, followed then by addressing any kind of graffiti or vandalism. We also have six restroom facilities at our parks that need daily maintenance prior to be being opened and prepared for the park. And so that along with trash removal tend to be our focuses on a daily basis, which, you know, the question would be, when are you mowing? Unfortunately, that gets usually rotated into the schedule when we have all those other things done. And so what that does to the mow schedule is our goal is to touch every park every two weeks in terms of mowing. Recently, we have gotten further behind in that due to irrigation repairs that we've had to make, things of that nature. And so we have come together as a team, most recently as today, and I've challenged my Parks Team to come up with some temporary reprioritization strategies that are going to hopefully allow us to get caught up on some of our mowing. I want you to know, though, that we encourage our constituents, your constituents, to call in anytime they have a question or a concern. We try to, you know, address those issues as they come, but admittedly, we are essentially putting out fires, if you will. We just simply don't have the resources right now to be as proactive as we'd like to, but there's hope, hopefully. What we're working on right now is the launch of an Adopt a Park program. I don't have all of the details prepared for you tonight, but I will be bringing back another presentation to you soon. And we're really hoping to engage the community, some of our neighborhood watch groups, people who really have a vested interest in their neighborhood parks in particular, working together with them on some strategies that might help alleviate some of those challenges that we're experiencing. Another unique program that we're currently exploring is the idea of a youth maintenance program. There are other communities who have launched similar programs wherein that they take youth from the community, kind of at the junior, senior level in high school, and they, it's kind of an ROP program, but you teach them the basic landscape maintenance skills, things of that nature, and there's an incentive there. Some programs have a stipend that the students or participants earn, and/or they get a certificate that they can then transfer to trying to get part-time jobs. What we're hoping to do is garner them for our own part-time use, because that's been another challenge for our Parks Team in that we have significant turnover, given the fact that we're limited to 20 hours a week, and it's an entry-level paying job. With the economy turning around in a more positive direction, we're competing with all of those other better-paying positions. And so, you know, I wanted you to get a little bit of a flavor of what some of the challenges are that we're facing right now, particularly in the Parks Team, but I have full confidence that your staff that you have, they understand what the challenges are, they understand what the expectations are, they're doing their very best to prioritize each and every day. But I'm hopeful that some of these innovative ideas that we're working on as a team will come to fruition and will be able to alleviate some of those challenges that we're having. With that, I'd be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments? Yes, actually.
Allison, actually, when, yeah, because the students also get community service hours for school, don't they?
Yes.
So that should be a positive there. That should help get some volunteers. But the other thing I was gonna say is, you get volunteers up here, you know.
I'm only wearing the shirt. I'm ready to go.
He's ready to go, so.
You know, there's a certain city manager that tells me that's a very, it's a stress reliever, get on a mower and just kind of mow, not think about anything, so we're always open for volunteers.
I don't know what the legality of that is. But I'm just saying, you know, if it could be done, you know, I'll give a day.
I appreciate that.
You know, I actually think you're actually on to something. We do ride along as often with our firefighters and with our police officers, and I think it'd be really valuable for some of our council members and some in the community to come see and come sit in and hear about what you all have to do and how you guys are stretched thin, but you're making our community look so great. So actually, I'll be out there just coming to say hello and encourage all of you. You might have to let the parks go for two weeks, maybe two and a half weeks, but they still like some of the best parks in the entire Central Valley, and you guys are doing a great job with the limited resources you have, with the two-day-a-week watering schedule. And so I thank you. I know there's always more we can do as departments, but your team is doing a really good job, so we thank you and appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you so much, Allison. Anyone else from staff? All right, moving on to Capitol Projects, Building Activity and Transit. Ms. Whitmore.
Good evening, Mayor Soyseth, members of the council. The Building and Safety Division continues to be very busy. They had 135 permits issued in June, with 103 of those over the counter, 17 is minor review, which is our five-day permits, and then 15 in traditional reviews. Fifteen, or sorry, 89% of those permits were issued in 15 days or less, which continues to be about the average for the delivery of those permits, and we had 382 inspections during the month. On the Capitol Project side, for the Turlock Regional Transit Center Phase Two, this project includes the construction of a new 6,000-square-foot, single-story building on the site next to the existing transit transfer hub. Approximately 2,000, 2,200 square feet of the building will be left as an unimproved shell space until a tenant is identified, and the remaining 3,800 square feet will be used as an office area for the existing Transit Center operations and a lobby with ticketing window and public restrooms. This is a $5.8 million project entirely funded with state and federal transit funds. DD Construction was awarded the contract. The contractor is mobilized on-site and will be occupying the existing park and ride lot next door as a staging area. Demolition work is already beginning, and shrubs and trees surrounding the Phase One area will be removed to make way for kind of improved Phase Two improvements on the site. The estimated completion date of this project is September of 2018. On the Fullkirth and Golden State intersection improvements, the scope of the project includes the installation of a dual-left turns for the northern, western, and eastern approaches, protected left turns, bike lanes, sidewalk with accessible ramps, intersection lighting upgrades, all-new traffic signal infrastructure and road rehabilitation. George Reed was awarded the contract. The project is expected to be completed by the end of this calendar year. Plans are to fully close the intersection of Golden State and Fullkirth Road in coordination with the Union Pacific Railroad for reconstruction of the intersection starting the week of July 31st. The closure is expected to last about five to six weeks. The biggest unknown in the schedule is whether the railroad will mobilize and work on the project, and the timeframe's expected by the contractor. As a contingency, if the railroad crossing isn't ready, three of the four legs of the intersection could be reopened with a stop-controlled intersection. This was done at the Twomey Road intersection back in 2008. A press release is under development to inform the public of the impending closure. In addition, onsite signs will be erected about a week in advance to give warning to the public. The 2017 Slurry Seal Project is also getting ready to go. The work is anticipated to begin by the end of July and completed in about three weeks. This project is the scheduled slurry seal for residential streets located in special assessment districts. Property owners located within these areas pay special assessments to have slurry seal done approximately every seven years to protect the quality of the roads. This project covers nine assessment districts and will include new restriping where needed. The fire station exhaust removal and the emergency repair at Padretti Parker are completed, and you will see the notice of completion for those actions on your August 8th agenda. There are two major projects that are out to bid. The first is a request for proposals for transit operations and management services. The bids are to be opened on July 21st. You also have the Swanson Centennial Park Playground installation. The award of the bid is scheduled for the August 8th City Council meeting. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments for Ms. Whitmore?
I'll try to answer them as I can.
You already answered them.
She's gonna try to. She said, I think she has the knowledge to answer them.
Thanks, David. Just, I'd like to go back to the plans and permitting and inspection portion. You indicated 103 over-the-counter, 17, excuse me, five-day, and I believe the number was 15 were traditional.
Were traditional, correct.
Can you provide a little perspective on what 15 traditional means? In other words, the scope of project, size of project, intensity of project, so we have a little better understanding.
Right. The traditional reviews are the larger projects. I mean, some of the projects that we have coming in through the process right now are the Tenpen Fund Center, for example.
Okay.
So these are larger buildings that require structural review, where 15-day permits don't typically require that kind of, that same level of structural review. So there are your pool permits, your additions, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much. All right, moving on to Council Initiative Annual Roadway Improvement Project for fiscal year 2017-18. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. During the June 27th council meeting, we're in, council considered a change order and acceptance of Project 16-63. That's the local road improvements, Slurry Seal Project, which represents council's commitment to improve city roadways with $100,000 of local funding. Councilmember Skare inquired during that council meeting regarding, his inquiries regarding prior discussions of allocating the $100,000 on an annual basis for a one-time basis and the ongoing allocation of those monies in future years. Because the topic was outside the scope of the 627 agendized action, staff assured City Council that an information briefing would be provided during this meeting this evening. During the August 9th, 2016 council meeting, the City Council actions relative to the proposal by Councilmember Booblaq for the city to undertake a $100,000 road improvement project annually, council unanimously agreed that staff would complete a slurry seal road improvement project, which has since been completed under the aforementioned project number 16-63, and the funding would be allocated from Section 2103 Gas Tax Funds and was a one-time allocation thereby avoiding potential ongoing exposure to continuing allocations required by Mezrel. I hope this information fully answers Councilmember Skare's question and any questions that the remainder of council may have, and reinforces the accuracy of the funding source for Project 16-63. Finally, if council has a desire to direct a similar road improvement project for the current 2017-18 fiscal year, in addition to roadway improvement projects already in the planning, design, bidding, and our construction phase, staff will certainly agendize the topic for a future council meeting. That concludes my update, and certainly willing to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? All right, well, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to, actually, instead of public participation, I'm actually gonna bring up council comments at this point, because as some of you know, this is the last meeting for our city manager, he's retired, and he was adamant that there would be no proclamation, but he didn't say anything about staying ovation or a thank you. So everyone, just give him a round of applause. So at this time, I'll kick it off to the Vice Mayor to tee us off.
You know this is dangerous, Mayor, whenever you give me the mic. I, you know, the, there are many thoughts, there are many recollections and memories, almost all of them good, when I consider the history of the chief with the city. And, you know, the best of times and the worst of times, when we're talking about reduction in budget and cutting people and going through the throes of rightsizing an organization. That's never easy to do. The one thing that I did appreciate, and appreciate yet today, is the personal consideration and the compassion that was exhibited then, and the sustained performance over the course of many, many years that you've lent to this city. Your dedication, your devotion, your concern, your love for the city is well chronicled. When we had the opportunity to welcome you back as our manager just under a year and a half ago, we are, were truly very blessed and have been for the last period of time. I can't think of anybody that I would rather have seen come into that position, and I thank you, sir, because it's been a joy. It's been my privilege, and the people of Turlock have benefited from this association. Thank you.
Councilman Skare?
Absolutely. As you know, I'm new. I just came in November. I had a few meetings with City Manager before that, to try to get information on procedures and other items, and every time that I had a question or I needed information, he made sure that I got all the information I needed. If he couldn't answer directly, he would direct me to the director in charge, and he made me feel comfortable in a job that I was coming into without no experience, and I appreciate that. I will definitely miss that. Thank you.
Councilman Jacob?
Just certainly want to thank you for your service to the city of Turlock, and on behalf of our constituents, thank you for your service to our city.
Councilman Booblaq?
No, obviously, I've sat up here the longest of all of us, and so I've been through a tremendous amount of times, good times, bad times, with you as chief, as interim, as full city manager. You were honest and came forward constantly to put us in check or to give us creative ideas of how to get to a solution, and I appreciate all of your service, and public safety facility was, was because you just kept going after it, not to mention you designed it, but I appreciate that, because I just kept asking you every meeting, tell me how much, how are you gonna find the money? And you did it, so thank you so much for your service.
Perfect. Well, right before the meeting, I stopped and asked why we have all these calculators on the desk, and, because I don't think I've used it, and it came in the era of previous councils, Councilman Member Howes and Spicer, and I believe you were the interim city manager at the time, and with him as city manager, you don't need calculators. He knows all the information, he has it right there at his fingertips, and so I don't know how often these were used with you at the helm, but they haven't been used very often since you've been here. You hit the ground running when you first got here, and haven't stopped since. And there was another email, this is an anecdote, that was just, came back to us on response to Mezrel projects from the Modesto B, and they just put the Garrys, plural, and then it just kind of went in from there, and so he and I were going back and forth on our responses, and so that will be missed, and so thank you so much for your service to this community, and even though you live in Oakdale, you're definitely a part of Turlock's fabric, so thank you so much, Gary. Give him another round of applause. All right, now we'll move on to public participation. I did that on purpose, because I think Mr. Johnson came all the way from Modesto to sing your praises, and so that's why I wanted to get in first. So this is a time set aside for the public to address the council. Mr. Johnson, do you have anything for Mr. Hampton or the community?
Should I say yay? Down?
No, not at all.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, council, citizens. Mr. Hampton, known you for many, many years, and I know that you taught me, don't make it personal. When you're in a position to lead, it's not about self. It's about what's best for those that you're leading. You're a fine example of how you alone have led so many people and departments, keeping self out of the picture. A desire to gain, you showed me that's not an interest. A desire to exploit self for recognition, that is definitely not an issue with you. You're a leader among leaders. You've been everywhere, leading and changing for the better. It is an honor to know you all these years, oh, and it's not over. I know where you live, and I'll be there. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Thanks so much. Yeah, round of applause for that. A fellow mayor from the San Marcos County said, "You clap so much in your council meetings." He was reviewing it, so we just like to clap a lot in Turlock. Ms. Diane Bartlett, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members, members of the public. My name's Diane Bartlett, and I'm the supervising librarian at the Turlock Public Library, and I like to come once a month and let you know what's going on at the library. If you've been in recently, you've noticed some changes. Our reference desk is gone, and we're all operating from the one desk. We have new self-checkout stations and new catalogs where that old information desk was, and I think I mentioned that last time, so I won't dwell too much on that. They do more than the old self-checkout did, so please come in and try them out, but we, staff, are still there to help you at the desk or at those self-checkouts, so come in and talk to us. Our new technologies also include some things that allow us to do our job better and in different ways. We are, though, still learning and still testing, so when things don't quite work out the way we think they should, please bear with us. And then secondly, I'd just like to talk, touch on a couple of programs coming up. For kids, next Tuesday, the 18th is our annual Harry Potter program. It is a huge draw usually, so get there early. It starts at 4:00, if you'd like to participate. And then for adults, on the 22nd, at 1:00, we'll be having a paint party. No wine, but we will have refreshments. And then thirdly, and finally, I just wanted to touch on the research report that was done back in 2007, 2008 with our friends at the library and CSU Stanislaw. They did a report on the value of library in our community. They were looking at six areas, two of the areas I wanted to kind of touch on tonight. The library is seen as being valuable, because it supports the citizenship and the community, and it helps fulfill our need to understand and connect to culture. Even though this was done in 2007 and 2008, I think it's still valid today, and as part of that, we want to celebrate our citizens and our community, all ages, races, economic status, and as part of that, you may have seen in the Bee Today, the article about the new citizens. We have a couple of longtime Turlock residents coming to the library to talk about their immigration story. Hannah and Dieter Renning will be presenting a program on Wednesday, July 26th, at 6:30. It's called Hitler Youth and Racial Disgrace: Two Children During the World War II Era. Mr. Renning was forced to become part of the Hitler Youth when he was young. He was in Dresden during the bombing of Dresden, right down the street from author Kurt Vonnegut, who wrote Slaughterhouse-Five about that same issue. And Hannah left, had to flee Germany, and came to Panama, and then was forced to leave Panama and almost didn't make it back into the United States. It's fascinating history. It's fascinating because it's still happening, and please come and listen to them again on Wednesday, July 26th, at 6:30. And their story is not the only story. I know there's other stories out there, and I invite you, if you have a story of immigration that you would like to share with our community, I would love to talk with you and make that happen. So again, my name's Diane, Turlock Library, 664-8100. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Ms. Bartlett. Appreciate it. Round of applause. All right, anybody else? All right, across public participation. Moving on to declarations and conflicts of interest and disqualifications, looking left and right, seeing none. Disclosure of top 10 maximum contributors, that's displayed within our agenda. Moving on to consent calendar, item 5D has been removed for separate consideration. Other than that, what is the pleasure of the council?
Advance the consent.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Jacobs, seconded by Vice Mayor Dehart, to advance a consent calendar, less item 5D. Clerk, please call the roll.
Adopting the amended consent calendar. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item 5D, approving the final map and subdivision improvement agreement with the First Free Methodist Church of Turlock, conditioned upon construction of improvements for the classic subdivision. Mr. York?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's just a minor clarification that we want to bring to the council's attention, and that is, within the agreement, it makes a few references to a particular kind of performance security, specifically performance bonds and performance and labor and materials bond. It's a very specific type of performance security and labor and materials security, and so the municipal code actually allows for different types to include cash security in its place. And so the clarification of the change that staff would like to propose within this agreement would be to actually change the verbiage from performance bond to performance security and labor and materials bond to labor and material security, again, then offering up a variety of options. In this case, the developer would prefer to provide cash security, and so we're okay with that. That actually makes it easier for us, because in the event we need to use that, we're not having to go through a bonding company, and so that is the recommendation of staff to make that clarification.
All right, perfect. Any questions or comments from the council on this item? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Just a logistics question. Do we have to go back now to the developer?
Ah, good question.
Or has he already sought this answer?
The clarification was sought by them this morning, and so they are okay, they're comfortable with this change.
Thank you.
Any additional questions in the council or the audience at this time? All right, what's the pleasure, bringing it back, what's the pleasure of the council on this item?
Introduce the motion with the changes mentioned.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Booblaq, seconded by Vice Mayor Dehart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Approving the final map and subdivision improvement agreement with First Free Methodist Church of Turlock, conditioned upon construction of improvements for the classic subdivision, development project number 16-78, developed by Fitzpatrick Homes, with references to performance bonds changed to performance security, and reference to labor and materials bond changed to labor and material security. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Thanks. No final readings, no public hearings, schedule matters. Request to determine the closure for the Pittman preview of Champion's Band Review hosted by Pittman High School Band Boosters is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, and approve a special event permit application for the Pittman preview of Champion's Band Review hosted by Pittman High School Band Boosters, authorize the associated closure, and authorize the city manager to apply appropriate conditions and restrictions. Allison Mangilder?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This event is a first-time event that Pittman High School Band is proposing to host in Turlock. Very exciting opportunity to yet again highlight all that Turlock has to offer in terms of tourism, and we don't have an exact number of the expected attendance, however, bands, junior high and high school bands from across the state will be invited to come to Turlock for this, so we're very excited. We hope that you will be too. The event has been outlined in terms of what closures will take place. We've gone through all of the proper steps, working through our special event committee as well as sending out all the proper notifications. We have not received any questions or concerns in regard to that, and so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but essentially, we're asking you to approve the special event permit and the associated closure.
All right, thanks so much. Any questions or comments for Allison out from the public? All right, bringing it back, what's the pleasure of the council on this item?
Best first resolution.
All right, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Dehart, seconded by Councilmember Booblaq. Clerk, please call the roll.
Determining the closure of Sandstone Street between Mountain View Road and Tegna Road, and Tegna Road between Sandstone Street and Golden Oak Court, for the Pittman preview of Champion's Band Review hosted by Pittman High School Band Boosters, is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, in accordance with Section 15304, Minor Alterations to Land of the SEQA Guidelines. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. What's the pleasure of the council for the second resolution?
Second section.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Jacobs, seconded by Councilmember Skare. Clerk, please be back and call the roll.
Approving a special event permit application for the Pittman preview of Champion's Band Review hosted by Pittman High School Band Boosters, authorizing the associated closure of Sandstone Street between Mountain View Road and Tegna Road, and Tegna Road between Sandstone Street and Golden Oak Court for pedestrian safety on Saturday, September 30th, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and authorizing the city manager to apply appropriate conditions and restrictions on the street closure. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa?
Yep. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, sorry.
Not four buses to be offline at any given time. While fleet maintenance staff works promptly to resolve the issues that arise, this limited pool spares results in service disruptions from time to time. In recent months, we've taken steps to solve the short-term fleet issues, such as hiring a mechanic and purchasing two buses for dial-a-ride service. We've also taken steps to address the long-term solution, which is the agreement with Gilig for the five-year agreement with Gilig for four to 10 buses to be purchased during that time, two of which were purchased just recently. And those are scheduled to arrive in early 2019 due to the extended production lead time. This evening, staff would like the council to consider an intermediate step, one that helps stabilize our fleet and better positions us to provide quality service in the meantime. The step would include the acquisition of four additional 26-foot Champion low-floor buses, which are the same make and model of the buses purchased back in January and delivered in February, with these buses used for fixed route service. Unlike most bus procurements, which have extended production lead times and delivery times, these buses are ready to go. They're new, they're sitting at the dealer's lot and available for purchase now. If the purchase is approved, they'll be outfitted with a necessary stop request and destination sign equipment so they can be used for either dial-a-ride or fixed route service and should be able to be on-site here at the city within 30 to 45 days, is the estimate from the dealer. This rapid turnaround time is the key to improving service and it's what sets this particular procurement apart from other opportunities. This allows the city to consider a variety of options to improve our service, including moving two vehicles that have exceeded their useful life to a reserve backup status or perhaps expanding service, which has been a request of the community members for the past few months. Or both. The cost of the purchase represents a good value to the city and it's in line with budgeted figures prepared by transit staff. The purchase helps provide stability to the fleet as we continue to prepare for future fleet procurements that will put the city in an even stronger position. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any question or comments? Yes. Councilmember Bublak?
Fire retardant?
Terrible joke.
Fire suppression systems are built in.
All right. Any other questions, Vice Mayor?
Just for clarification, Wayne, this is 501 for all four total?
All four total.
Not each?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? All right. Bringing it back, what's the pleasure of the council on this one?
Introduce the resolution.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Bublak, seconded by Vice Mayor Dehart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Approving the purchase and delivery of four Champion low-floor transport buses for use by Turlock Transit from Creative Bus Sales, Inc. of Chino, California, in an amount not to exceed $501,248, Fund 426, without compliance to formal bid procedures in accordance with Turlock Municipal Code, Section 2708V6, for City Project Number 17-35, purchase of mid-sized fixed route buses. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Bublak?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Thanks so much, Mr. York. Moving on to item C, there is a green sheet for this. An update has been made to the attachment A of this item, removing one of the members recommended to serve on the Economic Development Work Group. So, this is a request to authorize the formation of an Economic Development Work Group and appoint the members recommended. Ms. Pitt?
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council. As you might remember, at the last council meeting, what came before you was the culmination of the efforts of the consultant to bring forward the update to the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And at that meeting, there was some discussion amongst council members with regard to kind of moving forward in next steps in terms of putting together an Economic Development Work Group to begin work on the implementation of that plan. So, the item before you basically is an authorization to form an Economic Development Work Group for the purpose of prioritizing, coordinating, and implementing those strategies as outlined in the updated plan and appointing members as recommended. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Pitt? Out from the audience? Okay, bringing it back, what's the pleasure of the council?
From the fans?
All right. Give a second.
Second.
There it is. A motion by Vice Mayor Dehart, seconded by Councilmember Scare. Please read back and call the roll.
Authorizing the formation of an Economic Development Work Group for the purpose of prioritizing, coordinating, and implementing strategies as outlined in the 2017 updated Economic Development Strategic Plan and appointing the members recommended. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Bublak?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Moving on to matters, too late for the agenda, non-agenda items, looking left and right, seeing none. Council items for future consideration, seeing none. Council comments, we will go back to council comments. Any comments? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thanks, mayor. Yes, I did have the opportunity to attend executive-level conference with the League of California Cities and suffered through three days in Monterey. And I just want to come back and report the fact that we had a rather extensive briefing on the June revise of the mayor, uh, mayors, of the governor's budget. And we're all going to be kind of living with the result of that for some time to come. But one thing that we did have an opportunity to dig a little deeper into was a couple of the measures that are in committee, being transferred from either the Assembly to the Senate or vice versa. And one of which is particularly concerned because it does remove our local control. That is the Assembly Bill 649, which is absolutely the worst piece of legislation you can possibly imagine. Took the opportunity, I think the mayor and I had an opportunity to send separate letters expressing the city's opposition. They've come out now with another request because there is now a change to one of the features in it that makes it even worse than it was before. So, these are the types of issues that I have the opportunity to kind of take the lead on, on behalf of the council and the citizens of Turlock, to see if there is in some way that we can retain as much local control over what happens in our community. The downside, just in summary, grants to a lot of the companies, cell companies, the opportunity to place repeater stations the size of refrigerators on our telephone poles at a distance of 200 to 300 meters all throughout the city. There is absolutely no capability to have them comply with our neighborhood standards. So, it's definitely a bad piece of legislation. I'm sure they like it because they don't have to pay for it. But that's not, or certainly not a rate that would be commensurate with the inconvenience. But I'll be getting more information on that letter of response shortly into city clerk. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council comments? Council comments? Yeah, city manager, absolutely.
Thank you, mayor. I know I'm not a member of council.
No, that's fine.
I did want to take the opportunity to thank the city council for the recognition here tonight, for your kind words. I do sincerely appreciate that. Mr. Johnson, your partnership over the last 12 years has been, it has been monumental to the success of this community, both in your current role and your former role as the NAACP president. I think it was probably eye-opening for the Turlock Police Department, under my term as the police chief, to bring you in and introduce you and say, this gentleman will be providing training to us on community perspectives. And to this day, I still have members, one of them standing in the back of this room, who will tell you that has made a big difference in the organization in dealing with some of the social issues that we face in our community and in our nation. So, thank you for your service. Thank you for your partnership and your kind words. I've had the pleasure of serving in the public sector for 34 years and 10 months. I didn't quite make it to 35 years. I wouldn't trade it for anything in the world. It's been very good to me. I've seen some horrific things in my life, but I've had some great opportunities. I want to thank this community. Back in 2005, my family and I moved here and we were immediately embraced as a community member. And that means a lot. We moved our, we made our home here. Fortunately, we were one of the people that bought at the high end and sold at the low end, but that's okay, too. But I, my daughters have attended the university here, so I've made quite the, quite the economic investment, if you will, financial investment, I should say, in this community. It's been a privilege serving in a myriad of capacities in the city of Turlock. In my career, I've had an opportunity not only to serve as a, in all the different areas in law enforcement, but I've had an opportunity to serve as a city manager, assistant city manager, a fire chief, a public safety director. I've even worked as a parks, recreation, public facilities director. But frankly, Allison ran the, ran the department. I just had the title. So, those were during our economic difficulties. So, I've had a lot of opportunities. The one thing I can tell you, when I look back on the common issue and all the successes I've experienced, it's been surrounding myself with people brighter than I. And leaders can do one of two things. They can choose to surround themselves with people that are, that are inferior in intelligence and wit and knowledge to make themselves feel important. That's a lot of work, quite honestly. Or you can surround yourself with the brightest of individuals. It's less work and you, as an individual, one appears to be brighter than they really are because they've surrounded themselves with very, very bright people. In my, in my years of service here, I've done that and it's not been very difficult. If you look to, you know, if you look to your left, that row of people over there have allowed me to succeed time and time again. They're very, very bright people and it has made my job much simpler. So, much of the achievements and accomplishments you hear today have a lot to do with the individuals you see at the table and at the back of the room. Unfortunately, three of my department heads are on vacation. I don't know what I was thinking, allowing all three of them to go at the same time. But it speaks to the quality of seconding commands that we have in all the departments. They don't miss a beat. We can't send three people on vacation. So, with that, I want to thank the community. I want to thank the leadership in this city for allowing me to serve my final years in the public sector. Rest assured, I may be retired from the 60 to 65-hour weeks, but I still have some life in me to work. I just won't be working the 60 and 65-hour weeks and you won't see me leading full-time employment any longer. So, thank you, mayor, for allowing me to have a moment to express my feelings.
Absolutely. Give him a round of applause. Thank you so much. I had a very dry report on my U.S. Conference of Mayor, so I'll save it for the next meeting and let you have the final word. All right. Moving on, closed session items. City Attorney, what do we have on the docket?
Mayor, we have item 12A, B, and C to consider under closed session. All three items are set forth on the agenda with the relevant code sections and all the relevant information.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
I thought our honorary council member over here, you know, was going to motion it. All right. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Bublak, seconded by Councilmember Jacob. All that's fair to say, aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned to closed session. Thank you.[1785.71]